So I just had time to get a job. So I'm down at Jackson. I want to take that position down there, teacher. I teach astronomy class.
So, uh.
You're at Jackson now?
We went from thinking about it to making up your mind.
Really? You're a teacher there?
People like you.
You don't have on here that you're in a planning.
He said, oh, I saw you talk.
That you're in a planning.
I just tried to talk.
I tried to talk.
There's a rule you can't.
I'm just sick of this.
What do you teach in Jackson?
And you know what? You know what? That's what they want.
Aerospace science.
I just, just exactly what I was doing.
Been there since two thousand, eighteen, eighteen, ten.
Wow, I didn't know that.
Yeah, retired from the military in two thousand. A day later I got, I started working. Time it was good.
Oh, I hate it.
Yet you're on the board and say you're.
I went to a college meeting today.
Right, right, you can't, you can't be on the board in the place you work.
It disrespects.
Oh, I didn't know that. I mean, that makes sense.
Yeah. So I lived in Jackson, worked in Jackson, I couldn't be on the board either.
Is there a respectful way to disagree with people?
So, you know, spread the word, you know, if something's interesting, keep me on the board.
Absolutely.
It's tough, there's five people running for three positions.
I couldn't imagine you wouldn't be. Yeah, you never know, you're right.
No, there is no, 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 that's.
Are you guys going to?
It, it, uh, absolutely.
I have a card I think for you guys.
Absolutely. I'm gonna see my policy.
Well, well, it's, it's human nature, you know.
Yeah, but. I have, uh, I'm down there, uh, you know, with Woodruff. So, questions, you know, do I make it down there?
You know, a family member of you.
Right now, I've got both things reserved for.
And, and, I mean, we all sit here, like I said.
Oh, Mark, I gotta thank from the past. These guys threw the best part.
I don't think Everett comes in, or other, we all.
What day is he sitting next to me?
I don't see, you're doing that for sure.
Cause he's sitting.
I don't know, but, but you're right, the deeper you get into it. Deeper it comes up.
Well, that's pretty, that's pretty smart that you can go from one to the other to the other.
If you run out of tickets, I got more tickets.
Michael.
I'll give you the money when we go up.
If not, uh, my libido will, uh. Letting you tie yours.
He's, uh.
He set the date for the.
Hinging up, uh.
No, haven't said.
He's coming back to me.
She wants a couple.
It's the temple.
That's a raffle.
That's what she wants a couple.
Hopefully it still will be, but.
What did you ask me?
I said, what are they selling?
No, he's got a raffle.
Scholarship fund.
Was it next Thursday? Monday, which is the council meeting.
This for Jackson?
Yeah, for Jackson.
It's a council meeting, so that's, that's not good. They were gonna check with their people.
What'd you ask? Now what it was?
I could be in for five dollars.
I'm sure.
Okay, let's get the five dollars up.
Just put your name.
We gotta take payment.
Guys, only need your name and phone number.
I got a five.
If you did this fine.
Give me ten, no.
And you'll, and you'll put one for you.
Yeah, well, I just got it.
Four, nothing.
Okay.
That's what the ex-wife said, you must know her.
Well, it's funny, my boss lives in.
Yeah, I bought two. You're buying one, I bought two.
Well, well, all right. It's seven thirty, if you. All rise. Mackinon, if you can lead us in the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you.
And no one, no one's taking a knee, I see.
That's, that's a bad joke.
It's a very, it's a good joke, something I don't wanna see. Secretary, has the treaty been properly noticed for this such a long time?
Yes, it has.
Thank you very much. Have a roll call, please.
Mr. Bello.
Say yes, say front.
You?
Say here.
Mr. Bello.
Yes, how are you? I'm here.
Mr. Hudcavage?
Here.
Davis. Did you hear from Mr. Davis?
No, I didn't hear from Mr. Davis or Mr. Velos, and I did hear from Ms. Lee. Ms. Lee is working and she won't be here.
Okay, Mr. Kelly?
Here.
Mr. Limbo?
Here.
Mr. Mackinon?
I am present.
Ms. O'Leary?
Here.
Ms. Mantella?
Present.
Mr. Ty?
Here.
Mr. Rogoff?
Here.
Mr. Cornell?
Here.
Mr. Leon Cavella?
Here.
We have no resolutions, right?
Nope.
Moralization of resolutions, we have none. I need a motion to accept the minutes for last month's meeting from the October fourth, two thousand seventeen meeting.
I have a correction before we do that.
Uh, okay. And you would like to correct what page?
Yes, um.
Two.
It's page three, the third page in, second paragraph, where it says that, um, I had said that there's an increase enrollment from September to now of eleven students, actually a hundred and eleven students.
A hundred and eleven?
Hundred and eleven, just, yes, just from the normal.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a hundred and eleven.
Add another one. Michael, let me ask you a question. Now, I know my wife gets kids thrown at her all through the years. Is that a normal number, or is that above normal?
It, it's, it's above normal, because that was the difference between the end of last school year and the beginning of this school year. And what's happening, and even in my development, um, you know, uh, original owners are selling and families moving in, like where I lived, there were four and five bedroom homes, people moving in, and there was three families, it's like, like, ten kids on my block. That's happening, you know, and it's, it goes in cycles, and in some years it's not, but it just happens to be a peak cycle of increasing enrollment across the various grades, you know.
It's gonna happen on my street, there's three houses that are up for sale from elderly people that either moved to, you know, Monroe, or one lady passed away, so. They're all young kids, they're, uh, you know, young families that are moving in, so.
Right, we, we had a demographic study done to look at the out years to twenty twenty, and right now, we're just about the number of students that they said we would be in twenty twenty, and that was a recent demographic study. So it's not gonna get any better with what we're talking about now and what's going on, so. So we're being proactive and, and looking at options.
Any other changes to the minutes? If not, I'll take a motion to accept.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
All in favor? Any opposed? The ice has it. Thank you very much. Communications, every communications? Nothing on no site plans or subdivisions tonight in front of us? Old business, new business, administrative matters. Leon Cavella, you wanna talk about cover? And I have to, uh, why don't you paraphrase what we're gonna do?
Okay, pursuant to comments by the members of the board at the last meeting, you requ- You requested that a memo be drafted to be sent to the mayor and borough council with respect to proper calculation of the ratio between the affordable housing units and the market rate units, uh, and how those numbers were and have not been recited as accurate. You wanted to clear the record. And, uh, Mr. Leon Cavalo provided the data, the data is contained in a draft memo of October eighteenth, two thousand seventeen. The only thing I drafted was the first paragraph, he did everything else.
Uh, are we free to read this aloud before?
There's no reason to read it aloud.
No reason, we're just gonna send it to the mayor and council.
And you're gonna have some, you're gonna have some comment on it, and if it's, it's everything that you want to tell them, then.
Well, I, I think.
You could have it sent.
I think the gist of it, um, I, I think it's written well, it's, it's not antagonistic, it's just factual based.
Right.
And that's what we wanted, Michael.
The number, the number that's been going around, um, with the seven to one ratio is that between twenty fifteen and twenty twenty-five, that fifty-four hundred ninety-five total units would need to be built, market rate plus affordable. When the real number is, when you look at the credits and everything else, um, that we computed, it's two thousand nine thirty, so that's a significant number, it's almost cut in half.
Well, plus, the, out of that, nine, two thousand nine hundred and thirty, two thousand of that is with the old plan of the point. You don't know what the new plan of the point is, so act the actual number without the, without the point is nine hundred and thirty.
Is that true, John? Is that, do you calculate the point?
We need to know what we're doing with the point.
Right.
But I mean, that's, that's with the old plan.
Right.
Right now, the, uh, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, uh, right now, the, uh, the number is, uh, that, if you remember, uh, that the point, they went ahead and negotiated.
By their own, by themselves, right.
By themselves, they got, uh, fifteen percent set aside.
Right.
So it's two thousand units, three hundred of which are affordable.
Right.
That's the fifteen percent.
Right.
We don't know, we originally wanted twenty percent.
Right.
They didn't come back to us, and they kinda jumped us and went right to the, uh.
State.
Well, to the, uh, to the fair share housing center.
But that's off the table right now, cause we don't know what the new developer is gonna want.
Yeah, we, uh, yeah, I don't know, I don't think anybody knows what they're gonna do yet.
I like the letter.
Any other questions about the letter?
Are we gonna get a copy of the letter?
Send it to everybody, email it to everybody.
You can have my copy here.
I got one copy, I got a copy here.
Anybody else needs a copy, I have a copy at home, so I can give it to them.
We can make some copies if anybody else needs them. Copies, but I guess they're gone. Anybody else need a copy? Everybody's got a copy?
So Pat, can we, could we ask you to read that out loud at the council meeting? Would you be willing to do that?
Absolutely. As our liaison to the council meeting? Super. Anybody else have any other questions under old business, administrative business, or new business?
I do. In our last, uh, last time we interfaced, it was stated that the newspaper was gonna be contacted with regards to the, um, actual numbers, and just wanted to follow up if that had been done, or is that in the works, or is that something that would follow?
The actual numbers for what?
The letter, yes, yeah. We had made a comment that that would be an option to do that, to get the information.
And certain individuals indicated that they knew the individual who had printed the, um, numbers prior, and that they would reach out to that individual, so I just wanted to follow up.
Susan, the reporter, you know. Lauer?
Lauer, she wanted them?
Yes.
Well, once we give this, once we give this to the council, it'll be public, public knowledge.
Okay, so we're not doing what we did before?
No, we're, we're just, we'll just give it to the council and.
Yeah, there was a discussion, uh, but there was no stipulation.
That we had to do it.
Or.
No, not that you had to do it, it was just, it was.
I think the proper thing.
But we didn't agree to do it.
I think the proper thing to do is, is to, is to give it to the council, and, and those meetings are scrutinized pretty well.
No, I understand, it was, it was stated that I would give a call.
At the council, it'll be public knowledge, and, you know, if, if the paper's there and wants to ask questions, then.
Okay, it was just different than last time, I just wanted to follow.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody else have anything else for tonight?
I have another question. It was also communicated that it would be posted, so it's not gonna be posted, it's just everything's gonna be at that subsequent meeting.
We, they, they. We don't post things on our website. We don't have a website, the, the town does, if the town wants to post it, you could make that recommendation that it, we could ask, uh, the councilman to make that recommendation when you read the letter, that it be posted on the website.
If it's your pleasure, I just wanted to recap.
Oh, and listen, I, you know, we've been accused of a lot of things, and one of them is not being transparent, so, um, I, I don't have a problem with this, I, I think the proper thing, again, to do is ask the, the councilmen, since he's our liaison to the council, to read the letter and ask it to be posted on the website, so everybody can see what our stand is. Okay?
Mr. Chairman.
Should alleviate a lot of.
Make a motion on that, make a motion that we, uh, planning board recommends that that be placed on it, and then the councilmen can follow up on it.
I have a motion on that, do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions on that?
Well, what, what is the motion?
The motion is to request the council post it on.
On the website.
On the Borough of Cerberus website.
After, after we. You have a problem with that?
You really want me to answer that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I do.
Yeah, I don't like it.
I thought that we had a right to ensure that our constituents knew the actual numbers, that was a discussion last time.
I, I, I do understand that, and that's a fair comment, and I think, at the end of the day, the, the strategy and the goal was to correct the numbers, and to tell the, the mayor and Borough, Borough Council, these are the numbers. You've accomplished that.
Have we?
What, what council decides to do with the letter, whether it be posted, not posted, disseminated further, you know, you have to understand, this is a planning board, this is, you know, we hear applications. We don't unilaterally post stuff, we don't unilaterally contact.
With all due respect, these were the comments from the last meeting, so I was just highlighting what was agreed, which was agreed, when somebody says, I will, that's an omission of a covenant, meaning that I'm going to do this, especially in this capacity, um, as public servants. So I was just recapping what was spoken to see what the follow-up was, not questioning our role, or what our roles are on the planning board.
Well, I.
I'll, I'll end it at that, I mean, I told you what my opinion was the last time, and I repeat it again.
But the same transparency, I, I think we should, I mean, there's so many false numbers been out.
But you're, but Pat, you're a councilman, so if you read it and you request as a councilman that I want this posted on a website, then I could tell you no.
I'll do that anyway.
Yeah.
So we don't, we don't, we don't need.
I would throw the motion.
Okay.
I think it's a wonderful letter, and I wanna thank John for writing it, only because even sitting up here, you know, I'm very confused, but by reading this, I think it really puts it all into context, and it, it helps me better understand. So I think, as a regular person, I think that when people read it, they can better understand it also.
Absolutely.
We'll keep it in your back pocket, cause we're gonna have to explain it all along.
Wonderful, thank you.
All right. Having hashed that over. I need a motion to open up the public.
Make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Does anybody in the public like to speak? Come on up, introduce yourself, tell us where you live. Pat, we got a mic. Uh, we do, and we'll give it to you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It didn't like your right hand.
Thank you very much for taking the time to answer my questions. I'm Janice Benedetto from One Thomas Avenue in the Melrose section. And I've lived here for over thirty-two years now. Uh, now, in this, uh, letter, um, does it include the National Lead Cross Avenue site?
Yes, all our numbers, if you looked at our housing plan, show the, um, the number of, of properties, uh, and then it, it reduces it down to seven eighty-five, which is our settlement number for affordable houses. And then we have to provide the other market rate houses at whatever ratios we talked about in there, which is about fifteen percent for most of them.
All right, so this site is still part of the Fair Share Plan and still part of the Master Plan?
Which, I'm sorry, which.
The Cross Avenue National Lead Site is still part of.
It's part of it right now, but based on, again, I don't wanna get into litigation, but when, uh, the order from the judge comes down, there may be other attentive things that will have to be done, or there may be some options to do other things, so.
That's one of the moving parts.
So everything is a work in process right now?
Correct, and we're, we're cognizant of your, uh, concerns.
Right, cause you know, uh, what we have, the, uh, petition we handed in the four hundred and eighty signatures, and we're still collecting signatures, so we're well, uh, uh, you know, approaching, uh, you know, we're well, over five hundred for sure, but I don't know the exact count right now, cause we're still collecting signatures.
Getting the money is the other.
Uh, well, the money exists in the, uh, open space budget that the town already has.
Do you know how much money's there?
Almost seven million dollars.
Do you think that's enough to buy that piece of property?
Well, the one acre that the town owns was appraised at a hundred and seventy-six thousand a while ago, and, uh, quotes are supposed to be getting obtained, uh, for three appraisal, uh, companies to give competitive bids to do the appraisal, uh, as a result of the council meeting, um, before the last one. So, uh, uh, and there was a letter, uh, from the Open Space Committee to the council recommending that it be purchased as, uh, open space.
Well, it, it seems like you've done your homework, I hope there's enough money there to do it.
I say purchase it, if we can do that, purchase it.
Uh, the money is there, and with each real.
You know, if, even if you get everything together, somebody owns it, they have to sell it to you.
Well, National Lead.
Other, other than condemning it.
Right, well, National Lead already approached the town and asked if they lost the intervenor status, if the town would be interested in purchasing it. Now, the order hasn't come down to the, uh, from the judge yet, uh, about the intervenor status.
That's why they're still moving parts.
Everything, but, um, with our tax payments, uh, we're constantly adding to the open space fund. And then Councilman Buchanan, at the last council meeting, uh, asked that the, uh, person employed to do grants start looking for, uh, grant money to supplement, uh, the open space fund for purchases, uh, because there's green acre funds, county funds, state funds, there's other, um, uh, private agencies that, uh, do, uh, grants and what have you for purchasing open space, that might be, uh, possible, uh, contributors to the purchase of, uh, you know, the, uh, Cross Avenue Site, as well as other potential open space sites on their recommendation list.
Excellent.
So. Uh, the other thing, uh, was there was supposed to be a joint meeting of various, uh, uh, town, borough, I should say, organizations, such as the, uh, uh, Borough Council, your planning board, Sarah, and, um, uh, other, uh, uh, agencies that was postponed because of a conflict of interest, it was supposed to be held at the high school on October second. And I was wondering how, uh, the legal, um, review was going, to see from the planning board's perspective if they could attend such a meeting, because based on past, uh, history, uh, uh, planning board, uh, members, uh, in a non-quarum status have attended Borough Council meetings to, uh, uh, you know, be present at a, uh, a, a discussion and what have you. I, uh, understood it was being looked at from the legal perspective as to whether we could have this joint agency, uh, meeting.
It's already been looked at, and there are three legal opinions that have been issued in that, one from me. One from Mr. Sax, who represents the zoning board and also the, the town in the co-litigation. I should say, I don't like to use the word co, I use the word affordable housing litigation.
Okay.
And Michael Dupont, Dumont, who represents the Borough Council. So, those three legal opinions concluded that such a meeting would not be prudent.
And that's a final conclusion since the last council meeting? Because at the last council meeting, I.
As far as I know, it hasn't been resurrected, so.
I thought it was still under review based on the last council meeting, unless I misunderstood something.
Not, not to my knowledge, I, I, I don't have any information to, to corroborate that, uh, ever since, uh, those three opinions were issued.
So you're saying all three opinions were that it was not, uh, a possible.
Not appropriate.
And the problem is, is the moving parts again. We don't have a settlement agreement, it's in litigation, we can't talk about things that are in litigation.
And particularly with respective properties that may ultimately come before this, this planning board. You just keep in mind, the, the, the planning board has actually more of a conflict than the zoning board, because those types of matters come before the planning board. You know, permitted uses, development site plan subdivisions, the zoning board doesn't really hear them unless they, there are density issues, that there are use variances, or other things, so. It, it's more of a, uh, conflict, for lack of a better word for you, uh, for this board than any other agency.
What if it was, uh, uh, really looking at the borough in the future? Not talking about specific properties, not talking about existing, uh, uh, topics of parcels of land, but, uh, you know, more like discussing where the borough's going, like, uh, in the future with, uh, uh, planning, like the master, uh, plan, uh, you know, for the future.
That would be different.
That would be different.
That would certainly be different, uh, although I'd have to think about it, I probably have my misgivings about doing that, because master plan reviews are done in a, in a public matter, a public session, before the planning board, anyway.
Without a doubt.
That's what we do. So, I always have trouble with conducting, you know, informal hearings, gatherings, meetings, whatever you wanna call it, outside the confines of the planning board's regular agenda. So that's my answer to that, but it's, that's a, certainly a different animal than what you have with respect to looking at properties and other options in a matter where the, the town, the planning board, the borough is, is a defendant in ongoing litigation. That is never a good idea to have an open public meeting about those kinds of issues, because we're constrained about what we can say.
I understand there's limitations.
That's just gonna get everybody frustrated, because they're gonna wanna hear answers, and we're not gonna be able to give them to them.
And even when we do the master plan, we come up with the plan, we have public input, and after the public input, if we change anything, we have public input again, then we send it to be read at the mayor and council, when they adopt it. We only put it together, so there's plenty of recourse then for people to get involved. But so far in this process, nobody has.
All right, well, I'll speak from being a resident within two hundred feet of the Cross Avenue National Lead property, uh, who only found out about, uh, our, uh, neighborhood being part of all of this, uh, around May twenty-fifth, after the Borough Council passed the ordinances, four ordinances on, uh, first reading to be, uh, public noticed and, uh, for a public hearing. I don't understand, and I thought it was, um, uh, uh, law that, uh, it should have been, um, a situation where if our, uh, area, um, within the two hundred feet was being discussed here at the planning board meetings, that I should have been notified by certified letter.
What was discussed? What, what are you talking about?
Well, I, I live within the two hundred feet of the Cross Avenue National Lead property.
Okay.
Okay, so when it was being discussed as part of the master plan here, as far.
As the ordinance, not part of the master plan.
The master plan's in a, is a document that's been already, do, you know.
It's already a living document that's been put to bed.
And when was that put to bed?
Last year, two thousand thirteen. Two thousand thirteen.
Two thousand and thirteen, so the National Lead property was discussed as being part of this, uh, affordable housing in two thousand and thirteen?
No, it was not, no, I can probably tell you no, that, that was not. That's correct.
Okay. All right, when did it start coming up that the National Lead, uh, Cross Avenue property?
Probably when we got sued.
Which was what year?
Well, I don't know, I'm not handling it, I'd imagine two thousand fifteen, fifteen, early two thousand sixteen.
All right, and when it started being discussed as being part of the, uh, um, uh, you know, uh, affordable housing settlement per se, uh, what are the legal rules or laws as far as when people within two hundred feet get notified?
With respect to what?
A building on it and, uh, developing an ordinance on it and things of that sort.
Developing an ordinance is one thing, de- developing the property, once that happens, you would have been noticed. As far as I, I know, when it's an ordinance, you don't have to be properly noticed, I don't think the two hundred feet applies.
All right, when the planning board is bringing up an area as part of an ordinance.
The ordinances stem from the municipal council, have nothing to do with that.
All right.
We don't enact ordinances here.
Right, but who writes them?
The Borough Council, Council for the, uh, the borough, somebody drafts them.
All right, the planning board does not?
No, we do, absolutely not.
We review them and send them back.
All right.
And that's what we've done with this plan three times.
All right, and so when you review them, the public within two hundred feet is not obligated to get notified?
No, not here, not in this arena.
All right, so then how do we get, you, you said, you know, that you had public.
It's in the newspaper.
Hearings and things of that sort.
It's all published.
I think what you're looking for is, is, and, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but let's say this goes through, doesn't go to open spaces. I buy the piece of property, I wanna build something on it. Then I have to come before the planning board and see if what I wanna build fits there. Then I have to notify everybody what my intention is then, but until that process happens, nothing gets done.
Until you actually have, um, so the conceptual plans.
If you can think, we have conceptual plans of what the point was supposed to be.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? The five different sites, what was gonna be in it, this, that, and the other thing, we're in limbo again, because those moving parts are gonna change. So, if they come in and they wanna build exactly what we said, God bless them, but I don't think that's gonna happen, so now they're gonna have to come in and reposition us and tell us what they wanna do, and then we're gonna have to decide, and then we're gonna have to put out notice to everybody that's two hundred feet away from there, okay? So, your problem is, is we're not there yet, okay? I know you wanna stop it any way you can, the best way you're doing it is buying it, okay? Other than that, you have to let the process go through. Other than that, you have to let the process go through, through before anything happens.
All right, so the only way you-
So what also gets triggered in that is, my concern with that piece of property is, that's when all the environmental studies are done, that's when all the wetlands are looked at, all the contamination that's there, before you go and build on something, there's a whole bunch of plethora of things that have to be done before they can even do that, okay?
Correct.
So-
Before it comes to you or as part of it coming to you?
During, when it's at us. You know, but I mean, you know, what if the wetlands in there is 60% of the property? Are they gonna develop the other 40%? Well, I don't know. Well, that's their decision. That's all somebody else's decision, that has to, you know, but that has an awful lot to do with it. You know, what are the contaminations there? Are they remittable? You know? You see how long it took to remediate the National Lead property? That's been going on for a couple of years now. Millions and millions of trucks, millions of dollars worth, and it's, now it's buildable. But we don't know what we're building there yet, okay?
I understand that.
So, I mean, I can understand your frustration, but you're ahead of the curve.
I'm trying to understand the process and how the whole process works. Maybe Mr. Leon Calvo, you were part of the writing of the ordinances then, and the attorneys?
Yes.
Okay, so you and like Mr. Sacks?
Yes.
And Mr. Dupont, or?
To a point. Mr. Sacks interfaced with Mr. Dupont, I usually interface with Mr. Sacks.
Okay, so then you write the ordinances and you presented them?
Parts of it, and he may add something and/or review it, and then we'll change it or then add something, then, you know, and there's sample ordinances that we looked at, I reported that to the council at the last meeting, also that went into the development fee ordinance.
All right, and so then you develop, as a joint effort, the ordinances, and then they come, are presented to the planning board?
Uh, no.
And then they send them on to the council?
They were at the council level.
They go directly to the council?
Yeah, they come from the council. See, we don't, the planning board does the master plan.
Okay.
That's their work. Ordinance, preparation of ordinances or approval of ordinances come from the council.
All right, but they didn't come here? I thought the planning board sent them on to the council.
Well, once, no, the council sends them, Mr., sends them to the planning board. Planning board reviews them in a section of the municipal land use law that says you have to review them, right? And then they go back.
We are, the planning board, with respect to land use ordinance amendments or changes, those kinds of things, those ordinances are created at the council level.
Okay.
And we are a referral agency.
All right.
We simply look at those ordinances, make comment with respect to, are they consistent with the master plan or not? If they're not, we have to say why, and then it goes back to the council, and they either adopt it, don't adopt it, or adopt it, even if it's inconsistent with the master plan, they can do so, but they must say why.
All right, and so when they hit you for review, there's no need for public notification? The public notification comes from the council.
That's correct.
Yeah.
All right, so I'm understanding, I appreciate the education.
Sure.
This way I understand the flow of how all of this works because as part of the master plan, there is a architect's conceptual plan for the Cross Avenue National Lead site, which shows the townhouses and the, and what have you, the units and how many bedrooms. It's part of the master plan.
No, no.
That was part of the housing element.
The housing element, not the-
Not part of the master plan.
The housing element is part of the master plan, so that's where I'm getting that we-
But just because the housing is part of the master plan and all of this, it doesn't mean that if we want to put 200 units there with 25% affordable housing, that it's ever gonna get built. That's a big if. Somebody's gotta want to build it, somebody's gotta want to buy it. Now we've got somebody that wants to buy it for open space, somebody's gotta sell it for that. You gotta find out what the market rate is. So, even though we put these units in there, that doesn't mean that Kaplan's gonna go and build those things. He may not build them for 30 years. I mean, look how long Maco's waited to build the pit.
Everything takes time. And then where does the remediation take place? From the point of view, it needs to be remediated, after you get it with a-
It would be-
Well, that was done with SARAH, right?
Well, it would be a condition of, if the plan came to us-
Right.
Whether it be a site plan or subdivision plan.
Mm-hmm.
We can attach conditions if there's an approval, and one of the conditions would be that the land has to be remediated pursuant to DEP standards, consistent with our borough engineer, township staff.
And Mr. Cornell, from your opinion, and from my review of an amateur's nature or whatever, it's a very easy remediated site from the looks of it and what have you. It's not a major contaminated area. There's two areas of concern per se, and one needs remediation, the other one is-
I'm sorry if I didn't have the microphone on.
I don't know that easy is the appropriate word.
Okay.
There's contamination on the site-
That it's possible to be remedied.
Can be remediated with a certain funding to do that work, so-
Okay, yeah, I-
It is costly to remediate, but you're right, there are isolated areas that have to be remediated, and that's currently being reviewed by the DEP.
All right, and I apologize for using an amateur's term like easy, but what I meant was that remediation is possible, that there is the technology available to do so, even though it may be a very expensive proposition and timely proposition possibly.
Yes.
Thank you. I appreciate you taking the time and to, you know, educate me and the public so that they learn the process because I am aware that, you know, residents in the Melrose section do watch the broadcasts of these meetings. So I appreciate us having this conversation and your explaining things to me. And sir, you looked like you were gonna say something along the way.
Yeah, I'd like to go to the chairman before I just-
Go ahead, Michael.
Excellent, you know, the public coming up and the questions you ask, and this has exactly been my point. The outsiders looking in, we know what the planning board does, we know what other boards do, but from outside looking in, they're all confused, who does what? And that's never been clearly thing. Now, when this meeting suggestion came up, I know the council, you've mentioned this before, that it's not prudent. But it's legal. It's not prudent, but it's legal. If you took two members of each commissioner board, and they met, and it's advertised publicly, there'd be no action taken, you can do that, there's no legal concern with that whatsoever, okay? When that meeting was scheduled, the Board of Ed, we reserved the cafeteria that we were gonna do it in. Remember, Pat, I called you and just to verify the time, you had told me it's been canceled?
Right.
Okay, 'cause I was verifying the time ago, so I plan on going.
It was even public notice?
Yes, yes. And I think the more that these different entities speak, the better we'll, and I understand the legal concerns of what we cannot talk about, and we may not be able to answer the questions that some people may have, so you would need legal presentation there to say, you can't go down that route. But just to understand why we're here, and that's the problem, how did we get to where we are today? And it all goes back to 1975, and when the Mount Laurel decision was made, and when this town was certified for round one and two, what was done then? The current planning board is getting all the rape, that everything that we failed to do, when all these other people, and some people that have been very vocal at council meetings that were on the planning board in those times, okay? Need to answer that question. And that's why I think if we get together, we can articulate that, that's not being done. And that's why I suggested that we write this letter, not confrontationally, but just to say, this is the actual, now, this information that's in this letter, Mr. Leonca Vella, I was at a meeting where you actually briefed that in the public to the council, what those numbers were.
We've been over that.
We've been over that. So now we're actually putting it in writing to say, it's not 5,100, it's 20, which is a big difference, and that's the concern. And I think the points that you brought up is exactly why we need to do this letter, and we should be getting together. And I understand lawyers always play safe, and he's doing your job, he's protecting the board, that's what he's supposed to do. But it's legal to do it, I'm okay with doing it, and the more we speak about these things in public, the better it is.
I think the public would appreciate it a great deal because there is a great deal of interest.
Course there is.
There's a great deal of concern, and we need to understand the process as residents of the town. It's, you know, when you think about it, an individual's main asset in life-
Is their home.
Is their home.
Sure.
And it affects everybody's quality of life, their lifestyles, you know, the community that they live in. And, how can I put it? You know, while there may be a small, actual physical attendance at the meeting, people do look at it on YouTube, and they do look at it on Cablevision Channel 15. It is discussed, and that's why I'm asking the questions, so that while people cannot be here, they are understanding the process. And their questions are getting answered even though there may be a few representatives here in person.
Well, you asked good questions, that's indicative of the confusion that's out there. And I applaud you and your community for getting together, getting the signatures, and I think the best solution, bar none, is buying the property. Then it's, it's place closed. It stays the way it is.
Well, hopefully that's what we'll be able to accomplish.
Oh.
And I appreciate all of your time and hard work and effort.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's a big plus, we haven't heard that in a while.
Chairman, I have a question.
Go ahead, Pat.
Regarding the original deal between National Lead for that Cross Ave site and the developer, K Builders, does anybody have any idea what the terms of that deal was money-wise?
No.
No? Do we have no idea?
It's a private matter.
Yeah, we have no idea what the value-
And I mean, that's, I mean, I think they're going about it the right way. I mean, to get three impartial appraisals, you know, if one's 1,500, one's 1,000, one's 2,000, the price is 1,500, you know? Take the middle. But, 7 million dollars to me, I don't know how much property is there, you know, I mean, I'm-
It's 22 acres of property.
But I don't, you're telling me that one is worth 107,000 dollars?
176 is what-
Almost like 200.
Yes, boroughs acre.
Yeah, so-
So if you go 22, like, just to use round numbers to multiply easily-
Like two.
Times the 200,000, you're dealing with 6.6 million and what have you. But we're also dealing with, you know, you know, that's a round high figure, we're dealing with contaminated property, and, you know, the agreement will-
You hope.
The experts on it.
Well, good luck.
Jay, the contamination was what, four to five acres? Am I mistaken?
It's probably, you know, quarter of the property, so maybe in that range. There was a former water treatment plant on the property, so there were tanks and there were settling lagoons, that's where the contamination is. It's part of that process that took place for the National Lead.
So, before anything gets done, there's plenty of things to do before we even do anything. But keeping you informed is gonna be easy if you keep on coming, we welcome you here.
Thank you.
But remember, most of your questions should be asked at the council meeting.
I don't know if any of you do watch the televised council meetings and what have you, but we have a large contingent of Melrose residents that attend, and we have a local group, so-
Good. Super.
It's the way it's supposed to work.
You know, the whole problem with that is, is once we satisfy you, what do we do with the people up in Oak Tree with the water tower that have the same question? You know? Because as soon as, as soon as you get what you want, they're gonna get what they want, they're gonna want. And that's why I keep on saying that that 7 million dollars is not a lot of money.
Well, that's why also councilman Buchanan, we have, from what I understand, an employee on the Borough Payroll who specializes in grants, to start looking at other funding sources to add to.
I have a grant writer for Kitty Keepwell too, and I, and I, my challenge for her is to bring in more money than she makes, and it's hard, and it's hard.
Oh, actually.
I'm gonna tell you, grants are, grants are hard, you know, and I'm not saying that it's impossible, you know, with the freeholders, they give out grants and everything, but for open space, that happens. I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
You know, but it's, you're gonna have a long, long road to hoe on that end too. You know, there's, there's a lot of moving parts with that, you know? So, there we sit. Anybody else under new business, old business, or administration? If not, we'll take a motion to close the public.
Make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
The second? All in favor?
All right.
All right, we have some housekeeping news before we leave. Where is Mike? There it is. Our next meeting, we're gonna cancel November 1st meeting, we're not going to have a November meeting, we will have a December 6th meeting, okay? Everybody good with that?
Yep.
Ladies, did you hear that? We're good on December 6th, okay? Unless there's something that happens. Other than that-
And how will we find out? By calling Terry or emailing Terry?
About what?
If you might have the November 1st meeting?
We're not going to have the, we're not, we're canceling the November 1st meeting, and the League of Municipalities is during the second week, so we won't have, we never have any meeting.
You can also go to the website, go to departments, go down to planning, and you'll see the dates of the meetings on there. And I think you update that pretty regularly, Pat.
All right, so in case a topic comes up that you have to have in November 1st, it'll be on the website.
Yes.
Yeah, but I'm gonna tell you, that's 99.9%, not gonna happen.
All right, so the next meeting will be December 6th.
Unless there's a catastrophe.
Okay, then hopefully there's no catastrophe.
Hopefully we alleviated all of those. All right, if nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
All in favor?
All right.
Thank you, thank you very much for coming.
Please don't leave any of those flyers laying around.
Oh, I'm bringing mine home.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
You tasked me with an assignment, so it's the bottom of the eighth, zero to five.
The Yankees are up 5-0.
5-0?
Yes.
It's the bottom of the what?
Eight.
I like a girl that does what she's charged.
Man on first.
That's great. Bottom of the eighth. Thank you very much.
This is good dark for a couple of years.
Now we can go eat pizza.
Taking it home with the bed.
Ken, if you and I were in service together, court martial wouldn't ring a bell.
I got a side-
You'd be handcuffed and I'd-
No, no, we'd snaggle our way right out of that, buddy.
We would-
This is for you.
Drinking beer in the Oak Hall. I let you in, sneak in the back door. You could pass as an officer, you're like a-
Never see you anymore.
Looks like they got an extension.
Did you? How's it going?
Good.
What kind of meeting?
Good meeting, guys.
I am.
Well, he has to sign them.
Oh, poor man.
Hi, guys.
Good night.
One on each side.
Really? You didn't have both done at the same time?
That's good. He told me what it is.
Okay, so we don't need it.
Oh, man.
Got enough paperwork.
All right. Hanging in there. Good night, everybody.
Good night, thank you for coming.
Good night.
Thanks, Jay.
Thanks, Jay.
That meeting's at your place at 2:30 here.
He sent the courier for all that stuff.
Oh, he did? They know how to spend money. Oh, who's that?
Mark and I have been working with Riker for interrogatories. You gotta see the questions.
They sent me this, why, why, why is Terry sending me stuff, certified mail?
I don't know.
She's just sending me the ordinance, you don't have to send it to me certified mail. It's a waste of money.
And if she-
Takes it to the end.
Yeah, but I'll tell you what-
Like what? I'm gonna say I never got it?
If she sends it by email, that is, that's as good as certified mail. I stopped thinking.
And it's cheaper.
And it's cheaper, although I charge you 25 cents a sheet if I have to download[1723.13]
And it's cheaper, although I charge you 25 cents a sheet if I have to download it. Because if you don't give me the piece of paper...
All right.
Yeah, but it won't be until after.
You're gonna get rich on that 25 cents?
Yeah, rich.
Hey, look, these are like, what, 20 pages, 30 pages?
This was a couple of pages. You don't have to send it to me certified.
You gotta see what went out today. Seven boxes. Everybody had to notice.
Oh, really?
For this COA thing, the next ordinance.
I, I, what, wait a minute. Now you lost me.
Well, whatever.
This is for you, so the next one you bring will have no date in it. That's the form, that's the template.
This is what I want, but we didn't go into this.
No.
But I was so glad when you jumped in on that thing, because there's no way I would've known how to answer that.
That's my...
And you know what? A couple of years ago... He did sit with me, but he wasn't listening to me. You know what I mean? He wasn't listening what I was telling him.
No, no, I took the ones that he wanted you to answer, and I answered them for you.
The way that I would not have, I wouldn't have even known how to do that. Okay, so you, this letter is, is gonna be read at the council, and I don't have to do anything else with it? The letter that John...
I don't believe so.
They're gonna read. I don't take it up there to...
Yeah, you don't have to take it...
I don't have to take it tomorrow.
Nope.
It's gonna be read by...
Just confirm that with Tom.
The letter that you wrote. He's gonna read it at the council.
Councilman's gonna take care of giving that...
Do you want it on your letterhead or do you want it on...
No, no, no.
No, we just wanna know how it's getting to the council.
I don't want to do any of that, but make it do it.
You want me to write it and give it to you?
It's better coming off your letter.
I thought it was, yeah.
Plan and not me. However, how is it getting there, and that is through...
Is he gonna read it?
We don't have to send it independently.
No, we're just gonna give it to him. He's gonna read it.
We're not doing anything, Pat.
Okay.
Sending it, Councilman Lumbo's gonna present...
You're gonna get it to him.
I'm gonna write?
You're gonna write it.
I give it, put it on my letterhead, give it to you. You do whatever you need.
Give it to Lumbo.
You gotta give it to Lumbo.
Because you're gonna take the word "draft" out of there.
Of course.
Yeah, better.
And whenever their next meeting is, when it'll be read, and then...
I'm gonna say something, yeah. And then, you know, then you send that final version to Mr. Lumbo.
Okay.
And, and tell him, Lumbo, this is the...
The letter to be read.
You're going to read and give to the council.
Okay, got it.
Okay, good.
I got it.
You're in tomorrow, so I can get you that tomorrow.
Yes, you'll get me that tomorrow, and you're... I guess somebody must have threw it. Some people don't get out.
We're good.
Yep. Thank you for this confusing week. It was not, was on, it was off. It wasn't on, it was the off.
What's that?
The meeting. I was like nuts.
I told you it was on.
Jay told me it was on, but I didn't agree with the meeting.
And then Mark said he didn't want it on. He didn't tell, you know...
Yeah, but then I talked to Mark and, you know...
You told...
That's why I talk to him all the time. Are we good with this? No, all right, we're good. You know, I wanted to tell that lady, but I didn't want to bring it up.
Yeah, but the camera's not... Don't say anything else.
Okay, Pat. I'll see you around 11:00 or something like that. You're in?
Yeah, I'm in.
All right.
Okay, thanks, Mark.
All right, Pat.
Proud of your public, open public sessions, but you're not before I can do the...